Thank you Krista. Good evening, everybody. This city council special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. And we'll call this meeting to order. And Krista, if you'd like to call the role plays.
Yes, Councilmember Soltis.
Get first now. Yeah, I'm here.
Councilmember Hardjauzen?
I am present.
Councilmember Simamo?
Here.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
I'm here as well.
Mayor Wagner?
I am here.
You have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you Krista. Appreciate you doing that. And with that, we have one item for discussion tonight, and that is the strategic planning process. And I will turn that over to Regan. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So as you know, we're really excited about our new vision, mission, and goals. And the next step in that process is the creation of a strategic plan. So we actually have a strategic planning all-star on staff, and that's Selena. Don't gr- she knows she's it. So anyway, so she is going to help me through this process. I'm really excited about that. And this is the first step in it to do what we're calling a gap analysis, to really assess like the email I sent out to council. Go through each of our four goals, where we're at, and where do we want to be? And remember, this is where do we want to be in four years? This is a four-year strategic plan, not where do we want to be in 10 or 20 years, but in four years. So Selena, if you could share your screen and put the presentation up, we'll jump into it. We've got a PowerPoint here. Thank you. You go to the, yeah, the next slide. So I wanted to share this quote from Roger Martin, because strategy is really a problem-solving technique. So let's identify our problems and use strategy to solve it. Strategy does not start at a particular time or with a vague SWOT analysis. It starts with an identification of a gap between the aspirations of the organization and the current outcomes it is achieving. So that's, that's where we're at tonight, is identifying that gap for this strategic plan. We can go to the next slide. I think I'm going to turn the time over to Selena and have her cover this.
Hi, good evening, Council Mayor. Um, yeah, I really like that quote. I think it's a good, a good introduction to kind of the why, why are we here? So this slide that I have before you is really just kind of a depiction of maybe the kind of a visual of this gap analysis that we're going to be working on tonight. So it starts down here at our current state, and then it takes us through kind of how are we going to close that gap? To hit what is our future state, right? And as Regan had mentioned, this is a four-year plan, right? So tonight, you know, you don't really need to so much worry about kind of that middle gap piece. What we want to learn from you tonight is where we are and where do you want to go? And we will take that information and we will synthesize that out, and we will come up with some objection and action plans. So I want to just talk real briefly about why this is important, right? So you know, first of all, what is the gap analysis? So it's basically the process that compares where you are now to your ideal state or your future state. And why is this important? Well, as the council laid out the new vision, mission, and strategy goals, there were a lot of thoughts that went into the process. And there was general agreement about that long-term vision. What we didn't dive into was the what and the how. What steps do we take to get there to our few, to our desired future state? And how do we know we're being successful along the way, right? So what are those actionable items that that help bridge that gap? So taking the time to go through this exercise will get us grounded in kind of some general agreement about, you know, where we want to go. And a couple of things that I like to point out in strategy that kind of I think get missed along the way is that one, getting grounded in your current state allows you to celebrate your current wins and where you are succeeding, right? So when we think about where we want to go, you know, maybe we don't need to push so much in one area, but maybe we realize we have a larger gap in another area. But where we are matters and we should be celebrating that. It also provides that clarity about the vision and goal so that they become tangible, right? Visions and missions always feel so kind of fluffy and nice and delightful. And, and when we break it down into the gap analysis and we start to create objection, objectives and action plans, it really becomes tangible. And the kind of the third reason why it's really important is that it pinpoints and identifies our gaps and our inefficiencies. And it allows us to identify areas where we can improve those. So knowing those areas allows us to focus resources. It allows us to focus energy to improve those kind of specified areas, right? We're not taking a bite of the whole apple. We're just going to take some bites and get us there. So even after we've done this exercise tonight, and, and we've gone back as, as leadership and synthesized out kind of what these objectives are. You know, after we've identified how we're going to bridge that gap, there has to be a way to bring others along. And two items become very important at this step. So one is the duration and timeframe to meet those objectives and action plans. And we're going to talked about, we're looking at a four-year plan, right? So why is that important? Duration's important to ensure your objectives are achievable, achievable and not too far out of reach, right? So you don't want to set a goal so high that it feels impossible. And in the same vein, you want to make sure that, um, you know, that it's something that your staff and commissions and other folks that are going to be working alongside the strategic plan can complete in that specified period. So action plans are important because they're the roadmap, right? So it puts the work in the heads, the hearts and the hands of the people that are going to make it real. And it drives the implementation of the work effort. It defines resource allocations, prioritization, which is a big thing, right? How do we prioritize our work? How do we get synergy around the strategy? And it allows progress to report it. I think when we were doing vision, mission, and goals, we were kind of starting to talk a little bit about how do we know we're successful? When do we report back on that? So this visual today, what, what you really kind of want to think about is what are we doing today around these goals, right? If these were your goals today, where are you creating success? Where's there's a moment to celebrate? And then what do you want to do to get to that future state? I kind of have talked to Regan in the terms of like, where do we want to level up, right? Where do we want to get better? Or where do we want to drive towards a different outcome or a new outcome or a higher level of an existing outcome? And then we will take those objectives and work through kind of that roadmap process. I'm going to pause there and see if there's any questions from this group or if Regan, you want to add anything?
Hi. Yep, I don't see anything.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena.
No problem.
Yeah, so here's, here's the exercise for tonight. We're going to jump right into it. That first question, where is Covington now? That's the question to consider. We'll give you a few minutes, jot down a couple of thoughts, one to three of where you feel like we are now. And we'll do it goal by goal. And then we'll, we'll call it out. We'll see what everyone has. Each council member can share two of your thoughts. Try to keep it within a minute. So we have plenty of time here. And then, all right, it looks like we're sharing a different document now.
Yeah, Regan, I was going to put the goals up there so that they can see those as they're brainstorming. Yeah.
Okay. So, um, all right. Was there anything else to share on that other screen that I went away?
I can go back to it.
No problem. Okay, yeah, so we'll do that. So we'll put up, so let's put that goal back up then. And I'll set a timer here to keep us within that three-minute time. And so our first goal is robust and resilient economy. So take, take a few minutes, write down a few thoughts on where are we now? What are we doing good now? What do you like that's happening now? Then I'll call it in, in about three minutes. Remember, this is just on the goal, robust and resilient economy. Got about a minute and 30 seconds left. Looks like everybody's done. We got a few seconds left anyway, so change that and pencils down. So anyway, um, let's go through these one by one then. If it's okay, I'll just kind of look at who's on my screen and we can go from there. If you have, if you, like, I've got Christina first, and if subsequent council members have the same item, then we can just note that.
Yeah, I'll do a tally. Oh, sorry, Regan. I'll do the tally. And I just want to say for the room that I'm going to be typing fast, so please do not judge my spelling or my abbreviations. We will make this look beautiful when we are done.
I, I promise.
Judge is hard. I'm going to judge so hard.
Joe, I promise Selena, no one will make fun, so. Real quick, Council, did three minutes feel like too much time? If we can cut a little bit off there, that might save us a bit in future calls.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so we'll go to, we'll go to, we'll try two and a half next time. Okay, so Christina, do you want to share one or two of your main thoughts?
Sure. Um, so I go by adjectives. And when I think of a robust and resilient economy, I think that Covington is stable, and the reason they are stable is because we're conservative in our projections. And then I think of the adjective promising. Promising because we, well, not only businesses, but we, we have desirable, I guess we could say assets desirable. We're just desirable. Truly, like I said, businesses, but then I, you know, and I think so much bigger than that now that I said that, you know, our, our location, our parks are, um, just, just everything that we have is desirable. People come here. It is very clear that people want to come to Covington. That's it.
Okay, thanks Christina. Mayor?
First one I have is collaborative. We work well with our chamber, our businesses. I mean, just look with how we work well with Justin and with Oak Point. But then I want to take a look at the word resilient, even though it's in our goal. And look at COVID. And even though we had a few small businesses that were having issues, our community was resilient and worked well going out to small businesses, helping them, working with the larger businesses, just to help make sure that everybody's surviving, surviving and thriving.
Hey, thank you, Jeff.
I'll stop there.
Thank you. Beth?
Yeah, mine was more in line with, I was thinking along the same lines as Jeff, in that we did really well with COVID. We have a lot of big box stores that helped. Yeah, not just from satisfying our residents' needs, but even from an income base for the city. So that speaks to the resiliency. And then robust, I think we're starting to see more small businesses come in that, and this kind of goes to what Christine said about promising. We're starting to see more mom and pop businesses that also will augment an experience for folks to come to our city.
Thank you, Beth. Joe?
So one of my things, we're robust, we have a robust and resilient economy because we're, we're homey. We're, we're, we have that home-like feel to, to the city. We, we have that, it's, we, we don't want to use the term that we're a, you know, a bedroom community, but in reality, we're a destination for families. And that's what people want, is that feeling when they come to the city. And that's what helps a resilient economy is people feel like they're at home here. So.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Sean?
Yeah, I echo a lot of what has already been said. A lot of what I wrote down, others have already stated, but, um, you know, I guess along the same lines of what Joe just said, I think we're creating a sense of place. People now know where Covington is. Whereas, uh, you know, 10, 15 years ago, we had to tell them we were between Kent and Maple Valley, but people now know. So I think that's great. And then I guess the one I would, would add is that we have a, an engaged business community in our community. So, um, yeah, so they're, they're feeling part of Covington, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Sean. Did you want under sense of place, you'd mentioned that said, that said necessarily that we have a sense of place that we're creating that.
Yeah, we're, we're creating it.
Process, so maybe, yeah. Selena, if you just want to add.
It's not solidified yet, so, but we're creating it. That's where we are and got some ideas on where we want to be.
Excellent. Jennifer?
I am so excited that my laptop is working. I'm proactive. I feel like we're very proactive in planning and addressing financial issues. And then the other thing is, I think we're really, and not we, city staff is really creative in leveraging grant dollars.
Excellent. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, those were awesome. So once, once this is done there, we'll go to our next goal now. A socially vibrant destination. So again, two and a half minutes. Ready, go. One minute left. Okay, pencils down. That's just fun to see. Did two and a half minutes fill long enough? Should we shorten it? I, I think just looking at the time, it may be wise if we can cut it to two minutes. And then if we need more time, we can add that. I feel like Selena, we should have added some, some nice music during these, these thought times. That would have been nice, but.
Some Jeopardy music or something?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, let's get into it. Christina?
Man, you guys are lucky. You get more time. Um, so to me, I, when I, when I think of Covington in its socially vibrant state, I think of ambitious. Um, I think our businesses are ambitious. I think our people are ambitious. Um, there's, you know, I think there's going to be a lot that's overlapping, but they're ambitious because they're so creative, like, like Jennifer said in the last one. There's just so much creativity and room for it. And then the other word I thought of was, and I keep coming back to it, but it's intimate. Our people are so friendly. I want to say friendly, but it's, but the word I'm looking for is intimate. Um, it's small enough, Covington is small enough that we know who is here and we don't get lost in it. So good luck wording that.
Thanks Christina. Jeff?
So first one I had is innovative. Kind of goes off of creativity, but it's, a lot of our businesses became innovative over these past two years. And our city was very innovative to help make this a social destination. And then the second one I had is kind of going off of what Christina said friendly. I said considerate and kind-hearted. People wanted to chip in to help make sure that we that not only just the city survive, but also those who live here.
Thank you. Beth?
Um, I had put down where we're at right now is that we, we do have, I'm looking at it more of a, a place that people say, hey, I want to go to Covington participate in. So I was looking at it through that lens. You know, we have a really good base with our, so a solid base in some of our legacy events, such as the Covington days and the music in the park, capitalizing on, um, the CCP space. I also think right now we're also in a state of transition and we're just starting to look for ways to elevate that, such as Makers Market. The Chamber and Business Partnerships involving the community.
Yeah, those are excellent thoughts. Uh, great, Joe?
So I thought of it in the same lines as Beth. We have good, uh, great parks going on. We, you know, we've already, you know, this future plans, we have more parks coming, but we've got great parks now, great trails. We've got a hidden gym in Jenkins Creek that, you know, we're, we're making better. And, and then our recreation department, we have new people signing up every year. They, it continues to grow and grow. And so that, that's really makes it a vibrant destination is, is these events for families, these things that families can do together. These things that, you know, people who want to start their lives after graduating high school or college can, can get involved with. And that's where I think, I think that's where we're being that vibrant destination.
Thanks, Joe. Sean?
Yeah, again, most of mine have been already mentioned, but I guess one of the things I'd say is for our vibrant community, this is kind of more of a uh, support, but we have willing partners that, um, are committed to Covington and, and willing to create that kind of vibrancy and energy in our community. So I would definitely say we, that's a asset that we enjoy.
I'll ask a quick follow-up. When you say partners, what does that mean to you?
Um, well, that means our business community, but it means our school partners as well. So they're helping with, you know, allowing us to do our recreation events and then, um, calling out one in particular, the hospital here, that's kind of a, uh, anchor for our community and can, I think, play an even larger role in, in helping us generate vibrancy here.
Would you include the chamber in that, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so for some reason, oh, you moved positions on my screen, but I believe we're at Jennifer.
Um, I had a lot of things that have already been covered, but I think the only one that I didn't really see totally encompassed is, um, our willingness or eagerness to seek further engagement from other folks, either through our youth council or the Equity Commission, or, you know, further work in expanding our, our recreation and activities.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go on to the next one. I'll try to, I think I'll just naturally call on people in a different order because of how everyone moved around on my screen. And we'll do two minutes this time, so a commitment to health and safety. I mean, Joe? One minute left. If you're done, if you just want to give a thumbs up, and if we've got that, then we can end a little early. It looks like about there. Okay, we're done. Let's do it. So Sean, you're on the top.
Thanks. Um, so I guess what I would say here, and I'm going to combine two of them, is we have strong regional relationships with our neighboring cities and communities. So that definitely helps us magnify our public safety and health resources. And then, uh, we have the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, uh, which is a kind of a subset of this, a great model for regional service offerings or regional service, you know, resources. So that's something to, to think about is kind of how do we leverage and multiply our resources among our community, so.
Great, thank you. Jennifer?
Um, I think that we have been agile, but at the same time balanced in dealing with our COVID response through ensuring city staff are safe, through ensuring the community is safe. You know, I mean, we had to shut down all the activities. You know, I mean, we had to shut down all the activities and we did a really good job of, of balancing, um, the ever-changing regulations, um, with also keeping the community happy and engaged. And I mean, there are so many things there. Um, I, I could go on and on, but I, I, I think that's the most succinct way to say it. Um, I also think we've been really proactive in working or attempting to work with businesses and addressing, um, crime and, uh, public safety.
Thank you. Beth?
Oh. Oh, uh, yeah, so, um, I was looking at the fact that we're looking right now for ways that we can help control or improve safety that are within our reach, within our city. Not everything, you know, that we can do is not, not everything that needs to be done is something that we are able to do as council or as city staff, but we're looking at what we can do. And we also advocate outside of our borders. To the county, to our partners, um, for making Covington a safer place. And also the parks and the outdoor, we're setting the stage for healthy living and healthy lifestyle for outdoor activities.
Cool. Joe?
So I, looking at our current state of, uh, commitment to health and safety, I think we, we have a pretty good commitment when it comes to, uh, the hospital being here, being a regional, uh, area for, for medical care. But I also think we, it's, we have a commitment to health and safety because we have a caring community. Uh, we have a community that cares about safety and wants the best for, for them. I mean, all we have to do is look at Facebook and see people talking about, hey, be on the lookout for XYZ in this, in these parking lots, what's going on? Or, hey, you know, this, this is going on in this area you guys might wanna avoid. It's, we have community that cares about each other. And, um, I think that's really where it take, comes to that commitment is that we're helping that commitment to, to safety by helping the community.
Thanks, Joe. Jeff?
Um, I have the same one as Sean did at the top, um, with neighboring communities, but also with hospitals. So I guess that kinda ties in with commitment with hospital. And then my other one was, um, proactive, like Jennifer said, with, uh, proactive with businesses about crime and public safety.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Christina?
Thanks. Uh, as I listen to all of this, actually, I'm gonna go with the original two that I even had, but, um, it all comes down to being responsible and accountable. Um, I believe, uh, not only is our, our communities, our neighborhoods accountable, like Joe said, we're on Nextdoor immediately reporting. But it goes all the way up to, to our staff, to, uh, just to how we function. And I think we're very responsible and accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Council. So we'll go on to our next goal. Um, just because we all ended a little early, I, I put the timer at 1:45 at this point. If we need additional, uh, just let me know. So, uh, next goal is exceptional city services. Current state, minute forty-five seconds. Forty-five seconds left. Jeff's done. I can see his big smile, ready to go. It appears from my, uh, just looking that we're probably done, only about 10 seconds left, so we'll go ahead and, and, uh, get to it. So Sean, it looks like you're still at the top of my list here. Wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I would say that we have a, um, service-oriented staff that's committed to transparent and, uh, commu- communications on, um, city operations.
Great. Uh, Jeff?
I have leadership and, I mean, obvious, great city manager, but also the city manager who allows each department to have their own leadership. And then those departments, within the departments, there's leadership amongst the entire team. So it's, it's not a top-down, it's more of a bottom-up form where everybody works together for the, um, achievement of greatness within our city.
Thanks, Jeff. Jennifer?
Um, the absolute number one reason that I chose to get involved with the city is the positive culture that is, uh, demonstrated by city staff at all times. It's amazing to me. Um, and also, and maybe this is covered in the transparent communications and city operations that are, our website, our social media presence, our upcoming Zoom and in-person, um, council meetings really speaks to our accessibility.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer. Beth?
Yeah, so I put down, um, I think we have a really good solid array of services and programs. And I would also, I don't wanna be a Debbie Downer, but I think we need to diversify our social, uh, our communication services that we have because, again, not everybody uses what we have as their form of communication. So.
I think that's a great comment for once we get to the future state.
Oh, okay, wasn't sure. That's where I feel we're at now. So, okay.
All right, thanks, Beth. Joe?
So yeah, I, I think, you know, the exceptional city services we have are, we have a, uh, Parks Department that's active in making sure the city's beautiful. We have public works that are making sure the city's beautiful. And we have a, a police department that's going out there and working with the community to be, you know, more proactive in understanding how they can help to deter crime. So I think those services are making us more a vibrant community by giving those services to the people and, and reaching out to them.
Thanks, Joe. Christina?
Yeah, um, to end it, I, I, I'll just echo that we, you know, for, for a city our size, we have so many options. If you look at just a pamphlet of activities that are available for families. Um, and what that does, it is, because it's so attractive, it, it promotes community involvement. Um, if you've ever driven by on any given Saturday, I can't wait, by CCP. I love that there's, our community is hungry for involvement and it's so evident. Yeah, and, and we have, we, we have the space for that. We give the family space through our services. So it's wonderful.
Great, thank you. Okay. When you have a free hand, you wanna go to the next slide? Um, I wanted to share this, this quote, "The best way to predict your future is to create it." And so now we get to get into, what do we want to see in four years? And again, we'll go through each goal, uh, just like we did. I'll start with a minute forty-five to go through that and we'll just keep, uh, this process going. So if you want to bring it back up to our first goal, there we go. A robust and resilient economy. Where do you want to see us as a council member in four years? About forty seconds left. Okay, we'll go ahead and call it. It's like, everybody's done. Uh, Sean, uh, let's start with you again.
Um, so I kinda dovetail off some of the things I already said, but, um, I'd like to see us have a more diverse, uh, economy. Um, that includes, uh, higher skill, higher-paid jobs that allow people to live and work in Covington.
Great. Thank you. Jeff?
So in four years, I'd like to see Lake Point open and bustling around the lake. But with that, I want to see a downtown Covington that still continues to thrive.
Excellent. Jennifer?
Um, continued financial stability, uh, more money for, uh, traffic potholes and sidewalks. And I would like to see more small businesses, more mom and pops. We have plenty of big business, so I'd love to bring in some smaller business.
Thank you. Let, um, Selena catch up here. All right, so, uh, Beth, you're next.
Yeah, just, uh, I was talking, thinking about more mom, mom and pop businesses, specialty businesses. And also increasing that support either through the, through the chamber or through CEDIS or through our small business program. We've got a really great start on that, but helping those types of businesses thrive.
So just to clarify, increasing support for small businesses?
Yes. I'd like to see more small businesses, yeah, and increase the support for them.
Great.
To be successful.
Joe?
So, uh, I wrote that, uh, we have a, what can keep us this way? And in four years, I'd like to see something open at Lake Point. Uh, I, I know the mayor said that, but we need something open that's bringing people in, bringing them off the highway to see that if they're coming from, uh, Snoqualmie North Bend area. Also, I wanna see, you know, new restaurants coming in that people are making it a destination to come and eat their new, uh, to get that robust economy, we have to have some newer parks where people decide, this is where I'm gonna spend my Saturday with my kids. We're going to go to the park and play. We're then gonna go over to get something to eat at the local restaurant. Then we're gonna go do some shopping at Lake Point. Just those types of things is.
Joe, I, just to clarify a question, um, new parks, like, um, more than all the ones that are in our pipeline or, or improve of the current ones in the pipeline or?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we got it. Okay, excellent. Christina?
Yes, um, I would like, um, and, and I, I'm trying to be very reasonable here within the four-year timestamp here. Um, I'd like for us to have a plan in place for our rec center. Uh, whether that a commitment, um, it, obviously a plan in place that actually will move forward. And then I'd also like for us to be in a position where we, I guess, also have a plan for, uh, the layover and fixing the roads that need that necessary facelift because we're running out of road life or the life of roads. And it will need, we'll, we'll need to replace them or layover.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna shorten it to a minute, maybe fifteen seconds. And then if you can be a little quicker about, um, yeah, overlay, we got it. A little quicker in the responses, just saying we've got fourteen minutes left, uh, of this meeting. So, I will go to our next goal and go ahead a minute and fifteen. A socially vibrant destination. Forty seconds. Okay, excellent. Let's, uh, go ahead and start. I, I hope everyone's okay with the order. I just keep going and it's on here. Uh, no one's offended that I haven't called on them first. Uh, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll just throw out there, um, new, uh, and a, uh, new attractive events and festivals. Um, I was thinking, I've heard from others, the possible cherry blossom festival. And I think, uh, a pickleball tournament might be in, uh, might be in order, so.
Cool, thank you. Jeff?
To the lakes at Lake Point, getting that opened. And then going off of the events that Sean said, a Fourth of July Festival with fireworks.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I second that fireworks. Um, I didn't write it down, but I emphasized that one. Um, movement on the rec community center, that's a dire need, um, more programming for teens and seniors, um, and improved walkability through sidewalks and trails and continued improvement in our parks and, um, opportunity serving our space.
Thank you. Beth?
I would like to see several pocket parks where musicians can play, gathering spaces that are close to dining in our downtown area specifically. I think that's more realistic. And I like, I like all the others, so.
A checkmark for all of them. All right, Joe?
Um, so my, my big ones are, uh, we wanna be a destination, so we gotta have some good parks, which I've already been mentioning. Um, definitely a safe community. We need to maintain a safe community and that's what we, uh, are working on. And I, I think that's something that we, we have to continue with. And then, uh, shops and, and homes, we have to be a, if we're gonna be a destination, we gotta make people feel like they're home. And maybe they wanna make Covington their home if they're coming, if, you know, they're coming into town, maybe make it our, make it their home. And that's what we should be doing.
You. Christina?
Yeah, I third that Fourth of July. It is something that is tangible. It is something we can actually do. We don't have to break ground or anything for that. Um, um, so I love that one. Actually, I love. Um, so I love that one. Actually, I love all of these, but uh, and then I actually wrote a variation in restaurants. And what I mean by that is we have a lot of the same level restaurants. I'd like to see maybe something a little more upscale in Covington. I know that everybody has to leave, and I hear this from many you know, families and adults that we have to leave Covington to go to something a little more upscale. It would be nice to see just a variation in restaurants. I love, you know, the fast food, some of that middle. Yeah. And I I do have, sorry, I have indoor options for youth. Can we just write that down? Cause that's that one, we're down.
Uh, I, everybody moved around again, but I'm pretty sure I got it right.
Yeah, and I kind of accidentally skipped a slide here. So I think that for the resilience, it started with I think we got these ones here, got
Oh, oh, but
Got moved, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Great. Alright, thank you. Okay, let's go to the next goal. There, so a commitment to health and safety, minute, ten seconds. Thirty seconds left. Okay, that's it. And looks like Joe moved to the top of my screen. So Joe, you wanna start us off?
Sure. Uh, commitment to health and safety, figuring out what we're doing with our police department. Are we staying with the sheriff's department? We bringing it in-house? What are we doing? Also, more trails. We, a walkable community is a healthy community. If we can, if we can do more walking, running, biking, whatever it is, we can get out there and we can be a fit community. And then more outdoor and age appropriate activities for the youth and for adults. Uh, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a seniors flag football league, but there might be, you know, something, you know, a disc golf course for them for seniors. And for the youth, we have, you know, maybe a flag, flag football league or something. To that extent for all age groups that want to participate, but just those, those activities that help create healthy environments.
Got it. Thanks, Joe. Jeff?
Sustainable revenue source for public safety. And then a sustainable revenue source for a new aquatic community center.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. You're doing awesome, Selena. Uh, Jennifer?
Um, access to mental behavioral health services. And I, it's just a reduction in especially retail-related crime.
Okay, thank you. Beth?
Growing our police to the level where we can have more emphasis patrols, steady emphasis patrols. And a community that's fully engaged from the businesses, the residents, visitors. Providing, the city would provide that platform.
Fully engaged, that makes me, that 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 makes you put on the thinking cap, like, okay, we got a lot of work to get the community fully engaged.
Well, it is, it is, yeah.
I know what you mean. It's awesome. Uh, okay, alright, that just moved to the top there. So Sean?
Thank you. Again, a lot of things I was gonna say have already been said. But I think a broad spectrum of services here in in Covington, including mental health, but also helping our residents find housing, that sort of thing. Uh, and one of the things along with police, I'd like to see expanded engagement from the chief with the community. So if that's regular coffees with the cop or, you know, regular town halls, something to that effect that where they can communicate issues related to public safety and and how the community can help.
Thank you. Uh, so we've got five minutes left. We need one, one more goal, so we'll go quick here. Christina? Is that already calling you?
No, I just like to see the police contract question figured out as well. Uh, what we're doing with that in the future. And then something like a five K, something not too big that families can participate in. And we have the space, it's small enough. I love, I'd love, I would do that with the, the community.
Thank you. Okay, for some reason, Joe's jumping around in here. Is that everybody? If I missed someone? Everybody gone? Okay, excellent. Uh, let's go to our last goal, exceptional city services. I will go, I will do one minute. Thirty seconds. Okay, so just keep in mind, we've got about three minutes left, so we'll go ahead and start. Beth, you're at the top. Why don't you start us off?
As I mentioned before, more inclusive communication styles. We have a super friendly staff. I think all of that is really great. I'd like to see a little bit more of a personal touch with perhaps some of the permitting. We've gone to a lot of automation and a lot of our processes. Particularly in community development, just because there's so much, but it would be nice, especially as we start developing some of these other areas. If we could grow our staff, grow our staff so they have the resources to to speak to some of those emails or support for new businesses coming in.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, I'd echo that too, not only more diverse, but more increased communications. It's the same saw I've been hitting a long time. You can't communicate enough. Uh, and then I would add more accessible facilities and other resources. So kind of dovetailing on what Beth just said about our permit program or our online facilities, making those as accessible as as possible to the greatest number of people. And that means with disabilities, but also uh, maybe with English as a second language, that sort of thing, so.
Thank you, Sean. Jennifer?
Um, increased visibility and accessibility to council. And expected pro, uh, expected expanded program, so there's no waitlist. And if you've signed up for anything in Covington, you know there's a waitlist.
Yep. Christina?
You, I, I want to see our departments fully staffed so that the city staff doesn't burn out. Um, and the rest has been said, it's so wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Agree with everything that's been said, and the only other thing is a sustainable revenue source for our roads.
And Joe?
Uh, maintain, I, or ensure we continue to maintain a high level of service. We set the bar for ourselves and we can never go under it. So that's where I want us to stay. That's what I want to see us do.
Great. Thank you so much, Council. Uh, I need to also express a lot of thanks to Selena. She's just amazing. We're, we're really lucky to have her. And thank you for all these wonderful thoughts and and this process, vision, mission and goals. Council's adopted those, they're wonderful. With, with this gap analysis, the start of it, Selena and I will get together, we'll start breaking this down, putting together some draft objectives, we'll work those through the leadership team and bring those back to council, and that'll be the next steps. And when this comes back to you at that point, any questions before we wrap this up? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Regan. Thank you, Selena. Um, with that, that concludes our special meeting. Let's take a four-minute break and come back at seven oh five, if you want to stop the recording.